2017 City Commissioner Race. Learn more right after this.
Welcome to Community Watch. Greg.
Doc.
Political season, your favorite time of year.
It's one of them. I do love politics and I like hearing from people that are running. Find out why they're running.
Well, we're interviewing candidates for City Commissioner Ward Two. There are three seats on the Ward Two that will be in, we have six candidates running for those three seats. Voters can vote for one, or two, or three.
I'm always confused by that.
Yeah. Well, you know, the thing is if you, if there's some one person you want really badly, you vote once.
Block vote.
I don't know if that's called a block or not. But our first candidate we're going to be talking to is Wendy Davis. So Wendy has joined us.
You come.
Yes. Welcome.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Let's go ahead and get started.
Can you define the responsibilities of a Rome City Commissioner?
Yes, I can. Would you like me to?
Please.
Well, I, first of all, I think we're the voice of the people in terms of our city government. And it's our responsibility to, in my mind, to make sure our city is moving forward. The more basic things that people think about the tasks we have to do, we are the people set up to make sure that we have the right ordinances for public safety, to make sure we have the right services, things like your water bill and your water service and your trash collection in the city. And zoning matters are the things that people primarily think about when they think about the city. I think we have a great deal of responsibility toward economic development and toward making sure that our city is moving forward and thriving. I also think we have a great responsibility to be welcoming, both to guests, tourism is a huge industry, and to new people who move to our community. So we're all moving forward together.
All right. Name one accomplishment that you are most proud of, any idea or change that you have achieved since taking office.
Well, that one's a pretty easy one. I ran because I felt like the public was disconnected with city government. And I have worked very hard to break that disconnection and create a connection and create engagement. And I'm sure people, hopefully people have seen that my social media activities for my, my personal page have been very much about transparency and showing people when we meet, encouraging people to come to our meetings. Also, I have had the city, once I got elected, the city didn't have a Facebook page, they didn't have a Twitter feed. We quickly remedied that. We had previously gotten rid of our, our information officer when the budget cuts had come after the recession and we, I really encouraged our city manager to bring back that position. And she has done a good job in making sure people know about things that are going on. We now have live streaming of our city commission meetings. And in addition to that, you can go back to the archives and if you want to look at a meeting and you want to see the fifth item on the agenda, you can just click it and the video goes straight to there. So I have worked really hard to make sure people knew what the city was doing, make sure they had access to the documents we were studying, make sure that their feedback was taken to my colleagues. If folks couldn't get to the meeting, I said, leave me a Facebook message, send me an email. And I literally took those messages in to my colleagues as if they were there to be present. Because it's hard for people to make all those public meetings. And I feel like folks are a lot more engaged. Frankly, I think a little bit of having so many candidates for our election this season is a response to my, the energy I've put out there that says, the city is important and you should be involved. Y'all may remember in 2011, we canceled the city elections. There were six seats up, six people qualified. So they said, no need to spend the money. I don't disagree that there wasn't a need to spend that money, but it was distressing to me that folks weren't engaged in what our local government was doing. And that's part of the reason I ran in 13 and I feel like we've made some headway there. I think we have more work to do, but I'm very proud of the results of my efforts.
A recent U.S. Census places African-American and Hispanic residents of Rome at over 40% of the population. Do the city boards and committees reflect these numbers? And how can the city do a better job at placing more minorities on its boards and commissions?
We do not do an adequate job of making sure that our boards and commissions reflect our population. It's one of the things I have worked to change. I very frequently recommend that people sign up. We have a big book of people who said, I'm interested in one of these committees. And I tell people, hey, if you're interested, why don't you put your name in the book? And then the folks who are on the committee, on committees are the ones who look at the people who've said, I'd like to be involved in that, that body. And they pick between them and I very often strongly encourage not only people of color, but also younger people. I feel like our board appointments are wonderful human beings and people who care about Rome, but disproportionately older and whiter and more male.
All right. The current SPOST proposal includes an $8 million ag center. Do you support this project, not knowing its operational budget? And will you include maintenance of the facility within your operational budget? Or will you support a future SPOST to provide renovation and maintenance?
Well, first of all, the, the operation of that facility, should that SPOST pass this fall, which includes that project, would fall on, as the county's responsibility rather than the city's responsibility. Folks aren't necessarily clear on those sort of inner workings, but each of the SPOST projects are sort of designated as a county project or a city project in terms of after it passes, who's responsible for carrying it out. Like the tennis courts were a city project. And it was totally our responsibility to make sure they were built on time and on budget, which they were, and that the, we have the proper capacity to maintain those facilities at the standards that are required. So that sort of bottom line responsibility will be ultimately the county's responsibility. And I'm very supportive of them making that successful, as we have made the tennis center successful. And I think it's a project that has a lot of support from people who don't traditionally support SPOST projects. So it'll be very interesting to see how the vote goes, with that being sort of the premier project on the list.
All right. Appraisers are saying that property values are down in some Rome neighborhoods because of the high percentage of rental properties. And they are recommending not to make home improvements. Can anything be done to support homeowners in the city?
Well, that's, that's a new statistic on, I hadn't heard before. And it's troubling. I have talked to a lot of people who are doing a lot of renovations and a lot of fixing up. And our housing market has seemed to have turned the corner and starting to develop. I'm not sure if y'all, if folks are aware of it, but the city just did a public-private partnership to build five houses that have been very successful. We've already got buyers for three of them, for single-family dwelling, in addition to some of the other public-private partnerships that are billing, building rental housing. But that statistic is troubling and it's not one that I had heard. And there are lots of ways we can support through better public safety, through the programs we have for helping eradicate blight in some of the communities, which is also a drag. And we're working really hard on that in community development.
All right. While Rome's main street has been on several bests, best lists, Broad Street, Rome has also been named among the most dangerous cities in Georgia. What can be done to change this?
Well, first of all, the only day most dangerous list I've seen it on is one of those clickbait Facebook, you know, internet sort of sites. I haven't seen any reputable data showing that Rome is the most dangerous city. And I think that while there are public safety concerns, as there are in every city, and there's a lot that needs to be done to address that, I don't think we're legitimately on any worst in Georgia list in terms of public safety. But there is more work to be done. I think one of the base, basic problems of criminality is poverty. And I think that frankly, our city hasn't taken enough leadership in addressing a lot of the poverty issues in our community. And I keep pushing, hopefully that those items will go up on the radar screen and reach people's agenda.
Over the past several years, the Rome Florida Recycling Center has stopped accepting some kinds of plastics, glass, and other materials. Why are we selling, why are we seeing these limitations when our Bartow County neighbors continue to accept glass?
Well, my understanding is the glass situation we have here in Rome and the reason we stopped accepting glass was because the, the folks who were buying our glass stopped picking it up and buying it. And, and that was a problem. And so we are actually, it looks like with the transition to the new facility, we may be able to find another vendor who will begin accepting glass again. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity. It's a, it's a balancing act. We are blessed to have curbside recycling and garbage pickup in Rome. People do pay for it. But the recycling program is a service, but it also is supposed to be making money. It's supposed to be a self-sustaining, self-sustaining operation. And the glass and the plastics we eliminated weren't, you know, paying for themselves. And we had a problem with the glass being dangerous because we were sorting, not we, people there were sorting the items in the, you know, we recycle everything together and it was being sorted by hand and glass was causing some injuries there, which is also a concern. But I'm hopeful that we'll have glass recycling back soon.
All right. We have another recycling question. Here we go. Please explain the benefit of entering into a contract with Paper Recovery to handle the city's recycling materials. How much will this contract cost the city of Rome each year?
You know, I don't know that exact figure, but it is ultimately a benefit to our taxpayers and will help our operation become more fiscally sustainable by having that contract with them. We usually with our recycling contracts have a variety of vendors and Paper Recovery is one of our vendors who is just going into a sort of a larger avenue of housing where we're going to bring everything. And then they will be recycling, recycling the paper project, products as they happen.
Are you satisfied with the city transit system? Would you support a bus line going to Georgia Highlands campus to assist Rome students who have transportation needs?
I would love to see Rome Transit go to Georgia Highlands. And it's something I have talked about getting those players to sit down and talk about and unfortunately haven't scheduled it yet, but it's on my list of things to do. I don't think that our transit is sufficient for all the needs that are out there. But like a lot of communities, we have a lot of people with needs and we don't have a lot of resources. If we sort of priced it to, at the budget level, we would need to be sustainable, the folks who need it wouldn't be able to afford it, right? So it's a balancing act. If we didn't have the money that's coming in for our transit to be transporting our students every day, we would have a really hard time balancing those needs there. But I'm a big fan of transit and of understanding that there are many people in our community who don't have other ways to get to work and to get to where they need to go to for their daily lives. And I'd love to see us connect with Georgia Highlands.
Do you believe that the city of Rome is doing enough to protect its historic buildings and areas on the National Register and within the designated historic districts of the city?
That's a really great question. And it's a matter of great debate in our community. I tend to have been someone who, generally speaking, came down on the side of let's save it, let's protect it, let's enforce the ordinances as we have them. I do think it might be time for us to review the ordinances just as a community, because we haven't done that lately, and see if there are ways that we, there are middle grounds that we can find. It's, it's important to our community to treasure and value things that are of historic value. There's a lot of debate about whether if something's old, that makes it historic, or if there's an element to it that makes it historic, rather an architectural feature. And, and I happen to think that not just big houses are historic, but they're all elements of our community that have a history that we need to preserve.
Well, thank you very much for being with us. We appreciate it very much.
Thanks a lot for having me.
We'll be back after this break with another candidate for city commission, so stay with us.
My college offers classes that meet my educational and career goals.
With opportunities outside of the classroom.
Where the faculty know me by name.
My college can prepare me for my career.
I can earn an associate's degree and transfer credits to a bachelor's.
My college is a state college within the university system of Georgia.
My college offers courses that fit my schedule.
It's where excellence begins.
We are.
We are.
We are.
We are GHC, Georgia Highlands College.
Welcome back to Community Watch. And our next candidate for city commission is Bill Karestes. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Karestes, can you define the responsibility of a Rome City Commissioner?
Well, that's a pretty wide angled question there. I guess the number one thing is to represent the community in the way that they feel is the best way. Every commissioner will have a different opinion on how to handle certain things, but I think if you're elected by the people, or if you're elected by, let's say, people from South Rome for that, for that ward, then you should have the interests of that place first, but also the interests of the entire community.
All right. What is one goal you want to achieve as city commissioner?
I am running because I'm not a political person, but I authored a SPOST proposal. And that proposal then created, included the creation of a large park and recreation area in South Rome on the old Curtis Packing Area. If you notice from the negotiations with SPOST, there were three, three projects that were blended together. The Waterways Project is what it was called. And I'm running to help make sure that if the SPOSTs passed, that the elements that I had proposed actually come to fruition. In other words, a playground and a park in that, that area that will benefit the entire community.
A recent U.S. Census places African-American and Hispanic residents of Rome at over 40% of the population. Do the city boards and committees reflect these numbers? How can the city do a better job at replacing, at placing more minorities on its boards and commissions?
I don't know how you, well, you ask, you ask people to serve. All right, that's how I got involved. I was on the South Rome Redevelopment Corporation for one, for a long term. I was invited to join, as a matter of fact. And then in my position, as it became more influential, I actually recommended to the board to invite African-American participation. I actually had some participation that I recommended while I was on the board and as I left, I recommended some other people that I knew in the community. So I think, you know, you can't ask people to run, all right, but you can ask people to volunteer. And I think that's where you really get, get the lion's share of the participation in the community.
All right. The current SPOST proposal includes an $8 million ag center. Do you support this project, not knowing its operational budget? And will you include maintenance of the facility within your operational budget? Or will you support a future SPOST to provide renovation and maintenance?
I had the unfortunate circumstance to follow the gentleman who proposed the ag center. And originally it was $15 million. And he had 50 farmers, if you will, there in support. And it was quite an impressive presentation. But as it got whittled down and where it stands today, still nobody knows where it's going to be or where it's going to be done. I'm in favor of the SPOST, and so that's part of the SPOST, so it gets, you know, fathered in there. Now, legally, at least in far as I understand, SPOST is only for capital improvements. It is not for operating costs. That's why my program that I was going to submit was going to have to be funded by private donations afterwards. So you can't include maintenance in a SPOST, in that thing. It has to be just only a capital improvement.
All right. Appraisers are saying that property values are down in some Rome neighborhoods because of the high percentage of rental properties. And they are recommending not to make home improvements. Can anything be done to support homeowners in the city?
On the South Rome Board, I've had a lot of experience with this. And rental property, I don't really think is the, is the deciding factor in bringing down values. It's blighted, decayed, and outdated properties. And when we were on the board, we actually hired one other inspector to go around to be able to create, to cite violations and to help start in condemnation processes. I think you need to clean up the debris first, and that will help to improve values. Site, you know, what looks good, you know, is, has value. If it doesn't look good, it doesn't have value.
All right. While Rome, while Rome's main street, Broad Street, has been on several best lists, Rome has also been named among the most dangerous cities in Georgia. What can be done to change this?
Well, you know, in my experience in going to city commission meetings for the last six years and in talking with the past police chief and the current police chief, I know that there's a great, there's a lot of open positions that are, that can be filled, all right? There, it was a year ago, I think, there were 20 slots on the police force that if they could find the people, there was room for them, all right? We in South Rome, which has the perception of, of having high crime, but it really doesn't, there are other areas that have higher crime than South Rome, we asked the police department to make more passes through the, through the town. Just drive down the street more often. Drive down the street more often, let the people see, you know, see presence. And, you know, there's, there's ways you can do it, but we need to increase the amount of officers that there are to service the community. And we need to basically, you know, be, be more visible, I guess I might say.
Okay. Over the past several years, the Rome Florida Recycling Center has stopped accepting some kind of plastic, glass, and other materials. Why are we, why are we seeing these limitations when our Bartow County neighbors continue to accept glass?
I don't know about glass. I know, you know, and the plastic thing is kind of a, is kind of a two-edged sword. It's like, do you throw that plastic water bottle in your, in your garbage or do you recycle it? It does, I don't think it really makes a big difference, you know, to the, to the city's, or the county's, I guess, operational budget, budget for that. So, you know, why glass isn't in there, I don't know. I've, I've been flagged and tagged for putting glass bottles in my, in my recycling thing many a time and I just don't understand it, but I've been warned.
Please explain the benefit of entering into a contract with Paper Recovery to handle the city's recycling materials. How much will this contract cost the city of Rome each year?
I'm not real familiar with that particular issue, so I'm not going to, you know, throw a bunch of garbage out. But I know that from my experience in dealing with the city, city manager and assistant manager and county managers and the things that they're trying to do for energy efficiency, that if that's something that they deem prudent at the time, I guess I would have to follow that.
Okay. Are you satisfied with the city transit system? Would you support a bus line going to the Georgia Highlands campus to assist Rome students who have transportation needs?
Definitely. I think anything we can do to help students is definitely write up something we should do. It's interesting, I, I see the, the golf cart on Saturdays on Broad Street. I live right off South Broad. I see it and, you know, why it's there, I don't know. I hardly see anybody use it. I mean, most people can walk from store to store. But I think in that particular case, you're saying transportation to a campus would, to help students is a no-brainer.
All right. Do you believe that the city of Rome is doing enough to protect its historic buildings and areas on the National Register and within the designated historic districts of the city?
You have to say we're doing a very good job because downtown is, is beautiful. It's beautiful. On the other hand, sometimes, and it was just recently, the big, to do with the HOIT residents and having to go before the Historic Preservation Committee to get permission to tear down a building that's been there and there's no reasonable reason why they shouldn't have done it. Unfortunately, it was passed, but it took a long time and it, and it, you know, and it probably has some expense to the owners. So we need to be conscious of protecting those things for sure, but we have to use wisdom and better judgment probably in some cases on some of those issues.
Do you feel that a substantial number of low-income or minority Romans have a lack of trust for local government? If so, what might be done to help solve this problem?
Communication. You know, I've, I've dealt with a lot of the lower-income people in the South Rome area. And there, you know, we're trying to do a good project and there's pushback. There's always pushback. And you're trying to improve things, but there's always pushback. And that's because people just don't understand things lots of times. And sometimes we don't understand, you know, the reason why the pushback. I've learned through talks from some other people that sometimes the pushback is a disguise for something more nefarious. It's not really a pushback, it's just I'm trying to hide something. But we, we can definitely communicate with the people better because there are a lot of programs out there that avail themselves and people just don't even apply or try to take advantage of them.
How would you suggest increasing the participation of young people in the process of local government and also encouraging them to vote?
Good question. One of the programs that I'm trying to expand on is a program that is in every elementary school here in Rome City Schools. It's called the National School Program. It's, it's a division of the First T Program, which is a nationwide program, which teaches people, teaches young people certain values of life. It's not become a good golfer. I use, use the game of golf to teach core values, which is responsibility and perseverance and truthfulness, et cetera. You need to teach those core values, all right, and responsibility. And they also teach habits, which is family, society, community, those types of things. I think if you teach people at the young, at the early age level, all right, and, and hopefully then they will step forward and become better participants in, in our community and our, and maybe in the government.
Last question. Should Rome mayor be elected by the citizens or rather than selected by the commission?
You know, that's interesting because we have a unique type of government. The town that I come from votes for mayor. They vote for a mayor. And that mayor then runs for reelection, runs for reelection. Here, really, the power is based with the city manager, all right? So it's kind of a different, different thing. The last two mayors have been great friends of mine and this mayor is a good friend of mine. And the Mayor Pro Tem is a good friend of mine. I think maybe on the rotating basis that it is, is probably better. I think Ry Bagby set a great example when he just basically stepped aside and said, I've done enough, now it's somebody else's turn. I think if you have somebody get in that office maybe who wants to run and run and run and run, then you might have a conflict of interest brewing in the end.
Well, thank you very much for, for being with us.
My pleasure. Thank you.
That was Bill Karestes. And we also interviewed in this half hour Wendy Davis. We'll be interviewing the other candidates as well. And so Ward Two is a three, three seats, six candidates.
Citywide?
Citywide, yes indeed. So I know you'll want to talk about some of these issues off camera, so we'll do that. But I want to thank all of you for being with us. We will be interviewing the other candidates, so be watching for the programs. Make sure you plan to vote this, this year. It's, it's not a major national election, but it's very important to us locally. And so, in fact, I would say.
More important.
More important in some ways, because your choices locally are going to, that's going to affect you in ways that you will see.
Direct effect.
Every day. So it's very important for you to vote, so, so make sure you plan to do that. We will be cutting away shortly and then come back with another program with additional candidates. So thank you for being with us and we'll see you next time on Community Watch. So thank you for being with us, and we'll see you next time on Community Watch.